Thank you, Ms. Kitter. There's no approval for minute. So at this time, we're gonna have public recognition. So if there's anything that anybody wishes to say, now's your time. Please limit your comments to five minutes. Public recognition is now open.
Charles Brinkley, reside at 155 Alpha Drive, Union Gout, Brooklyn, 37066. I didn't know the comments for tonight, but I know public recognition was that they committed me. Someone tried to do my best. Lady told me, so you better go ahead, or you gonna forget if you don't. Well, I'm gonna try my best to what I'm doing. I wanna give a big thank you for those who participated in the Martin Luther King Day celebration. We, the NAACP of Gallatin and Sumner County, I'd like to say on behalf of the President Thomas Oakstaden, I would like to say a big thank you for those who joined us on Zoom. We canceled it as in person for the parade. Then we canceled for in person at the Gallatin High School. So we went to Zoom. I'm in Facebook, and I noticed several of you, a lot of people watched it, and it was good. And we would like to thank our Grand Marshal, who was selected, Dr. Heel, who has served as the Medical Director for the Savage Center here in Gallatin on Hoshere Pike, who is a retired clergy and Doctor of Internal Medicine. Would like to just thank him and tell him my appreciation for being selected as our Grand Marshal. Okay, we'd like to thank the Speaker. We'd like to thank the Mayor for comments that she made. We'd like to thank our guest speaker, Key Bryant McCormick, who is our permanent lawyer, Esquire, worked for the Blair Firm in Hendersonville, who have previously practiced private law, who now work for the Blair Law Firm. We'd like to thank her. If you didn't hear, you might wanna, I don't know if it's recorded or not, that you wanna listen to it. But she was terrific, and we certainly appreciate it. And those, and Mayor, you was right for the, what do you call it there? Official day that we greet for, we celebrate Martin Luther King Day for Gallatin was in 1995. That was some 27 years ago, and we have been marching ever since. And they looking for volunteer during that time. Instead of me volunteer, I was voluntold. I've been there ever since. And I would just like to take this opportunity to thank the Gallatin Police Department, all of the resource people that you serve well, the Sheriff Department, Department of Sanitation, the Emergency Medical Services, fire department, all of you. You are to be congratulated and saluted for job well done. And I'd just like to make this big shout out and tell you how much we appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Well, I'm gonna say thank you, Mr. Brinkley, for 20 something years of leading it. So you do a beautiful job, and I know you're committed display of commitment and communicating a message that we need to hold to steadfastly. So thank you for doing that.
We thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Pascal Jovans, 1335 Long Island Pike, Mayor, Councilman Overton, Council. Coming back to what happened last week, because after almost six years here coming to city council, I was thinking, I saw probably everything. But I got surprised to see something happening, 180, a full 180 of this council on an approval. So I came back to what's great now that everything's recorded. So I came back, like I do regularly, to what happened before and look at the council two months ago when that project appeared in front of you and look at the council before and look at the council last week. And what, you know, I'm wondering again, if, if you guys are not breaking the sunshine law. Because when I see a 180, a full 180 from that council without one question asked as a normal thinking person, the only explanation I have is that, actually, there's two explanations. The first one is that you guys all talk behind closed door with illegal, or you don't really care. And I think you guys care, so I'm pretty sure you talk behind closed door. So that, that's kind of surprising. And I got plenty of things too. I was not there, so I asked my wife to read the statement made. And after that statement, I had some word like misinformation or, you know, people, you don't say that. So I asked Jeff to put some video out, but it looks like we have issue with the system. So I have a audio of a couple of things. And you should know that when I put information out, that I take it from somewhere. So first one is from 11, 9, last week, November 9.
Do you know the question, James? He said something about, and I know you said you were for this, sir. He said something about we're getting too many rooftops. What's about departments? It's a ton of roof, I mean, ton of people coming in right there.
Correct.
So that was Councilman Hayes asking a question to our idea director about rooftop. And so the information, yeah, came from me, came from you guys. And the second one can, you know, came back to was about traffic and congestion and usage of traffic. So I have another audio from our city engineer talking to you guys. Hopefully you can hear.
One thing you'll notice here is in highlight in yellow and also in red, no, numerals are roadway segments or town stations where essentially the volume exceeds the normally accepted volume for a roadway level service D. So these are the roadway segments or town stations where we obviously have congestion issue. So you'll see those and they're highlighted in yellow, and then if they're highlighted in orange or kind of pink, I guess, I don't see that color. Those are nearing capacity. They're not over capacity, and I shouldn't say capacity, but capacity at level service D. There is a level service E and F, which is, F obviously is failure. So you can see the trends here, obviously, where with years, for example, on State Highway 109, which is just across the Cumberland River, it was over capacity for many years. Now that they finished that road, it's not over capacity, so we don't have a congestion problem or shouldn't have a congestion problem on those roads. So you can see the trends that have developed over a long period of time here. And this is one way we can track how we're doing to manage congestion.
So you're sitting here, and you hear the same thing that we hear, but it's recorded, so it's kind of, kind of interesting. So when a citizen talk about congestion, that's misinformation. But when the city planner talk about congestion, it's information. So that would be nice to get on the same page, maybe to listen of what the people say. So again, you should know that when citizens use information, it's probably coming from somewhere. It's not misinformation. And you should go back and listen to videos to make sure, you know, what I said, it's what you say. So again, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jovans. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak? Seeing no one else, we're gonna close public recognition. Mayor's comments.
Just a few things. I do want to remind everyone that each Friday night through February, there is the Stay Warm Shelter at the gymnasium at 260 East Winchester, beginning at 10:00 PM and going until 6:00 AM. On the 31st of January is the Philly Spirit Night, and that's for friends of Gallatin Miracle Park. So that's why I mentioned that, to benefit our park. On the first is Councilman Hayes' birthday. On the second is the Gallatin Young Professionals Group. Dr. Rashonda Odom is the Speaker that happens at Black Press Number Three, which I do believe is the one on Long Hollow Pike. That happens at 8:00 AM. And, and then I will remind you too, it's a bit off now, but still, on the 8th of February is a public meeting for the Parks Master Plan that happens at 2:00 at the Civic Center and then 5:00 here at, no, it's at the American Job Center. At one point, it was gonna be here, but now it's hanging in the American Job Center. So those things are coming up. I think that is all for the evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate those comments. At this time, we'll move into the agenda. I'd remember one, Ms. Nichols.
Just wanted to introduce this and let the experts discuss it. We have Mark Mamantov from Bassbury and Sims with us tonight, hopefully. And Mark is pretty much an industry expert on TIFs, and he has drawn up a lot of our documentation for this TIF on the goat farm. Anything you want to add?
No, I think we just turn it over to Mark and let him give a brief introduction of this project and then TIFs in general, so that we can kind of get some education.
Good evening. Can you all hear me, Jay?
We can.
Excellent. Don't, don't hesitate to yell me if you need me to speak louder. And I'm sorry, I couldn't be there in person with you tonight. I'm on my last day of quarantining from COVID. So I'm bounced back, but didn't, didn't think I should travel yet, because I really would have liked to have been there in Gallatin tonight. So as a little bit of background, as I mentioned, I'm with Bassbury and Sims, but I am in our, we have a very small office in East Tennessee in Knoxville, where I've worked for 30 years. The, I, a number of years ago, was asked to write the state law that essentially allows industrial development boards to tax increment financing. I had worked on tax increment financing for redevelopment projects for many years and was very familiar with those statutes. And so, and so I've worked a lot with industrial on boards and tax increment financing. And the reason I'm giving you that is a little bit of background is I, we've worked over the years with both Sumner County and Gallatin, and you may recognize our, our law firm name from helping you all with bond issues. And the, in this case, the county attorney contacted me, Lea reached out to me and said that they had a proposal to do tax increment financing for a ice facility that would be managed by the Predators, and that they had a developed proposal for this. The, we have worked on a number of these similar facilities through myself and also my partners in our Nashville office on some of the other Predator facilities, and it just closed the financing of the multipurpose arena in Barksville, where the Predators will also be managing the ice, the ice space at those. And so we were familiar with this, but this transaction is quite a bit different because you essentially have a local citizen willing to finance, provide financing for the facility if, if, if this tax increment financing plan is allowed. Basically, what, this is a first step in what would be a much longer process if this proceeds. This step would allow the, would, would approve an economic impact plan, which is like a redevelopment plan if this was done by a redevelopment authority. But what it does is, once it's adopted by the governing bodies of the taxing entities, which is case would be the City of Gallatin, the county, and a small part, as I stand it, is in the City of Hendersonville. Excuse me, I coughed. The, and so for the plan to be effective, it would have to be approved by all three. As you all know, and the project is a, you know, really cool project. It'd be a draw, or it'd provide a first, you know, really first-class ice facility there in Gallatin, Sumner County, and also would be a tourist, you know, attraction for youth sports and, and tourism. But it also involves the development of the entire area around it that I guess we've been calling Shoot Lane, is how it's being referred to. But as you all know, it's basically along Veterans and, and in that area and near, I guess, was it the Jack Anderson Elementary School? And so, you know, they, Lea had asked me help look over, the developer had actually prepared the first draft of the plan. And these plans, there's a lot of, I don't want to say tricks to the trade, but I generally represent the cities and counties in doing this. I primarily don't do developer side work, although we do do some. But my, what I primarily do is help our bond clients, like you all in Sumner County, try to make sure that they do it in a way that is pro, you know, if they like the project, pro economic development, but also tries to make sure that all the bells and whistles are in there as best we can to protect the city and the county and, and the Industrial Development Board. So I substantially rewrote the plan to add a number of things that I thought was helpful. The development team has been good to work with, and we went back and forth on a few drafts. They've committed to donate three acres of property next to the school to assist. My understanding would help with traffic flow eventually, and so they've agreed to do that. But what is being presented to you at your meeting next week and is on your workshop, obviously, for tonight, is consideration of the plan. The Industrial Development Board met earlier today, had a public hearing, had a good discussion on the project and voted to recommend the consideration of this plan by, for, for, by you all and the commission. And so that would be the resolution that would be on your agenda for your meeting next week, is do you approve this plan? The approval of the plan allows the tax increment financing and the project to proceed. It does not mean that it will in fact happen. There's a whole lot still to be done in terms of financing, negotiating terms of the agreement with the Predators. Because what has been presented to the Industrial Development Board in the county and to you all was that the Predators would manage the facility effectively, turnkey management, almost like a lease, and would be making, instead of us paying them the management, they would actually pay to manage it because it's a business development tool for them. And those payments, along with the tax increments, would hopefully be sufficient to pay debt service on the facility. I'm in your shoes, I guess the biggest question I would have, how does this affect the city financially? And is the city responsible in any way whatsoever to pay any shortfalls on the tax increment financing? So the main way this affects the city is if this plan is approved, once the allocation period begins, and it has to begin no longer than 2025, it gives them a little period of time to finish the facilities and start the build out of the development. So once it, it begins, there would be a 20-year allocation period, and they actually could go to the state, ask for a longer allocation period if the Industrial Development Board is okay with it up to 30 years, which is the maximum effectively the state would, would sign off on. But basically, it would, during that period of time, you would continue to get the smaller taxes that are, you know, attributable to that land in its current form. But you would also get whatever portion of the taxes, that your tax rate that's attributable, attributable, excuse me, to you paying debt service on your bond. So if your tax rate was a dollar and 10% of your tax rate is to pay your debt service, then you would be able to keep that. I spent quite a time with Susan and the mayor sort of discussing that and how to calculate that. And I think that's something that's a sort of a little bit of a work in process. But you do get some additional increment from day one. But beyond that, that increment, the additional increment from the area that's within the city limits of Gallatin would be allocated to the Industrial Development Board to be used to pay debt service on the, on the, on the, the project, which is largely the ice rinks and public infrastructure. It is a large project, $40 million. The IDB folks asked today, will this increment really pay $40 million along the Predators payment? And the answer is, we just don't know. And so they, their projections are such that they believe it will, but that really conflates the full build out of the entire development, such that the prop tax increment grows fairly quickly in the next three years. Is it the end of the world if it doesn't? Well, it's not for the city or the county or the Industrial Development Board. Note is nonrecourse to all of you all. The only payment source will be the incremental taxes. If there is a shortfall, the person that bears the shortfall is the holder of the TIF financing, which we understand likely to be affiliate of the current owner of the property, who has been very instrumental in this development. So if the incremental taxes aren't sufficient to pay the debt service, this sort of being this is really important, is the city or the county will not have to make up any shortfalls. You are not pledging your full faith and credit. You're not pledging your credit in any way. What you're committing to do is to, you are basically instructing your administration, your staff, to calculate what the increment is each year as taxes are collected and to distribute it to the Industrial Development Boards, that they can use it to pay debt, to pay debt service on the tax increment financing. And we try to put in a number of bells and whistles to give your staff out of time to make those calculations, to try to keep them as simple as we can. It would be missing to you to say it's still not gonna be a somewhat complicated calculation, because there's expected to be a fairly large number of buildings within this development. So it'll be a little time consuming. It won't be as time consuming as somewhere you are probably familiar with Drake's Creek TIF that was done a number of years ago. I know some people were concerned about it. This is a very different in terms of administration, and I think the way it will be handled, we've learned a lot about TIFs and have best to document them, since the Drake's Creek TIF was done a number of years ago. And so I think that on this one, easier to administer, but it will certainly take some of your staff time to make the annual TIF calculations that will be needed to, to do that. So what you're being asked tonight and the next week would be, are you comfortable in essentially giving up your incremental tax revenues or most of your incremental tax revenues from this, these parcels of property to the extent they're within the city limit of Gallatin to help support this project? And, and that's, that's, that's really the, the issue that's in front of you right now. I know that was a long explanation. I hope it was somewhat helpful. Glad to ask, answer questions and, and to provide any further information that I can.
And I would also let council know that the developer is here tonight. And I don't know if you have questions that are concerning the TIF or the development that the developer or his representative have said that they would be happy to come up here and answer any questions as well.
Is there anybody here that's having questions for the developer or anybody? Have any questions on it? No, so you can't speak. This is just for committee meeting. Any, anybody on the council have any? Yes, Mayor?
I mean, I think we really do need to flesh out some more information so everyone fully understands, because we haven't done a TIF in the City of Gallatin. We've all, likely all had exposure to it through the TIF done years ago for the Indian Lake Development. We kind of know what they are, and we know how they work. But if you're not real clear and you have questions, and you understand, you know, how you, you have concerns about how it could impact the city, I want to make sure that you feel like you know exactly where we are. A couple of things that I'll just throw at you, because I think they're important to know, is, one, I think this is a very, very strong development. I really commend the developers and the investor behind it, because without them, we wouldn't even be talking about this. Then the second piece that I'd say is without the TIF, this isn't something that could happen in a city our size. In talking with the Predators representative that was there at our meeting earlier today, Gallatin will still be the only place between Nashville and Knoxville that has ice. And he was comparing, he was comparing us to the Chicago area. And I think they said they had, what, 70 sheets of ice within a 15-minute drive in Chicago? And he said, of course, we're not the same market. And I said, well, if the people keep coming here, we're gonna be exactly like your market. But, but anyway, just talking about the popularity of ice throughout the country and the increased popularity here. And then several people chimed in about how many people were driving from this area to the other side of Nashville to get their kids or even adult leagues. They have adults that are going to practice at 1:00 and 2:00 in the morning, just so they can get ice time. And he estimated a million users a year. So even though we are giving up property taxes on the property as it's developed, we're still retaining what we get in property taxes at this time. We'll also still realize the personal property, the occupancy tax, and the sales tax, and all of those things are gonna be new to the city. I would also, I would also feel fairly confident that this facility is going to increase our tax revenue and our occupancy revenues in the region, because while there is going to ultimately be a great brand of a hotel and really good shops and restaurants in that development, there's gonna be plenty of spillover. So I anticipate this facility actually boosting the sales of existing establishments and others that are in the pipeline. So I think even though we are essentially giving up some of our taxes as it's developed, it's money we don't have now, and we're going to be realizing a lot of new money in other ways. And, and so I think, I, I, I just really appreciate, like I said, being the invest, the investor and the developer, because they have big plans, bold plans. They've chosen here to do it. Oh, and one other thing I want to say to all of you, when we first had this discussion and we talked about the various scenarios in which it can be executed, I really did like the idea of having a rink in the county, part of the development in the City of Gallatin and part of the development in the City of Hendersonville, because I said, this is a real model that other communities could follow that exhibit how you can get a big city amenity in a small city. And where this rink is gonna sit now is going to be for our whole county. Gallatin, we won't say it's in Gallatin, Henderson, we, we might, but, but it's not gonna be in Gallatin or Henderson. It is a county amenity. We're going to help support it. I think you all know that we've said from the very beginning that we're going to play a large role in the inspections. It's going to have our codes, and we are at some point going to have some kind of intergovernmental agreement where we provide fire protection to it. That's how committed we are to this project. But, so I've just done a bunch of other stuff about you that I think is good about it, but shoot holes in it. Feel free to. So, because I, I want you to have questions. I want you to have concerns. And we have the expert right there who can, who can flush things out for you.
Thank you. Great explanations. Any other comments? Any other questions? Anybody has? Is there a motion to send it on the council?
Motion to send on.
Folks, you've been made in properly second. Folks, you've been made proper second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passionate, honestly. Thank you, Rachel. Thank you, Susan. And we appreciate you for joining us tonight. Thank you a lot.
My privilege. I hope to see you in person before too long. Thank you so much. Have a beautiful, have a great meeting. See you later.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Nick Tuttle, number two.
Thank you. But the item number two is an item that we've been working on for quite some time. Velvet or Drive and Peninsula Drive Traffic Comment Update. Have included in your packet a a report. Um, and it's in the report. It shows some studies that have been conducted over the the past few years, uh, since we got an application for some traffic calming improvements. Like in the neighborhood of uh Peninsula and Belvedere. And so our first survey that we did was back in twenty nineteen. Uh, so we've been working on this for quite some time. We tried some different techniques uh to slow traffic or move traffic from one place to another. Uh, and and we did our very best to try to get comments back from the residences out there uh throughout this process. So we surveyed a group of residents uh that were, if they have a peninsula or Belvedere address, we surveyed them. We also included those along Davis Drive and and Moss Circle as they tie directly into this neighborhood. So altogether, it was a hundred and forty folks uh that we tried to survey as we went through this process. And it was very difficult to to get the response uh from folks. We mailed letters uh on multiple occasions. Uh, tried to to give self-addressed stamped envelopes for them to mail these surveys back to us. But also uh worked with our mayor's office um with Jeff Henshaw to to provide or allow for an online submittal of that survey. With all that said, we we got about uh sixty six to two thirds, sixty six percent, two thirds of the the citizens responded back to us. Uh, and and of those two thirds that responded, we had less than seventy percent say that they were interested in having a permanent installation of speed bumps. So if I break down the numbers, that's less than fifty percent of the the neighborhood responded saying that they preferred to have speed bumps installed permanently. Uh, so with with all that said, uh, the the survey data that we got back, uh, the initial survey. And then our our surveys that we did throughout this process, uh, we found that the speeds out there were probably between the eighty fifth. The eighty fifth percentile is the number that we use in the engineering world is kind of your your benchmark as you know, the majority of the folks out there are doing this one thing um or less. And so that eighty fifth percentile number. They were slightly elevated. Uh, they they were, if if I'm comparing it to to other neighborhoods, definitely higher than normal. Um, so the cut through issue, if if we are concerned about that, I think is more of an issue than the speed is uh itself. Um, and so.
But haven't we done some things to try and mitigate that too? I know we've been reaching out trying to get the Google directions straightened out. And the no no through traffic signs or no trucks. Seems like we put some kind of signage up there.
We, yes, we we've tried to take small steps in that direction and and I think that it helps some, but uh it it's still. Go Google's looking for, you know, the fastest route. Apple Maps is looking for the fastest route and they're going to offer that to folks for the most part. Even even though we're trying to, you know, make that request. So I know we have reached out to uh to to those mapping industries and uh and tried to, you know, plead with them. Uh, and for the most part, it does, it does help from a trucking standpoint, because I do put the type of roadway that's already there. And so I know that there are some that that was some of the complaints was there are trucks that that would cut through there from time to time. Um, I think most of them were were folks that were maybe part of a, you know, landscaping company that will remain un unnamed. Uh, and and other folks that that may have actually uh been in that peninsula area. Uh, and so not totally out of 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 the ordinary for them to cut through there to get down to Peach Valley Road or or the end of Lock Four Road or something like that. Uh, so with all that said, um, speaking with the chief, with uh Mr. De Priest, both chiefs actually about uh our opinion and our recommendation. And and not really getting uh enough response from the citizens. Uh, our recommendation back to you is is to go back to um the the always stop setup that was there. Uh, remove the temporary speed bumps, which is certainly a big maintenance um hassle for our public works folks. Uh, and and go back to that situation. We have spoken with the applicant for uh the neighborhood, which was uh Mr. Mark Schmidt. Uh, that the second applicant, and I forget Liz's last name. I think it may be Frye. Uh, but but she has actually moved um out of the neighborhood now. Um, and so we we did not contact her, but but Mr. Schmidt met with us last week. And we walked through um all the logic and the reasoning behind what we were doing. And and he was very kind and gracious and um slightly disappointed, but um but very, he was understanding. Uh, so I, he was invited to come tonight. I don't see him here tonight and I and we also, you know, mentioned that he may want to reach out to um Councilman Overton, his councilman for that district.
Nick, I have to say, since we've put these measures in place, to be honest, we hadn't had any complaints. Uh, and before we started these measures, I was getting weekly complaints about the traffic coming through there and speeding through there. So I'm going to ask that we at least put this off for a couple of weeks. Give me an opportunity to talk to some of the residents out there that I know very well. That called me on many, many occasions and just see what they're, I mean, you know, when you send out surveys, Nick. You know, the reason we got so many back is because Ms. Schmidt and him actually took them around to the subdivision. We got responses back, but you just mailing stuff out. I doubt very, I I'd say it's probably a high percentage and that's on any survey you do, okay? It's no difference in us having public meetings on all of our uh long range plans and everything you get, you get, uh, you know, a handful of people show up and that's all you get. So I think it's a good response to get that many back that you've gotten. So and the majority of those, I mean, they're happy with the speed bumps and so. Uh, so I'd like to put this off for a couple of weeks. Just give us an opportunity to talk to them and and see. Because I don't want to make any drastic changes, take them out and then us get right back to the situation we've been in. We've been doing this now for twelve, thirteen years. And and finally, most of the complaints have went down and and I don't want to start them again. So just give me an opportunity.
I got a question, Nick.
Yes, sir.
There's a particular stretch on the road that uh the speeding is done. Is it a straightaway? Maybe we could take part of them out and with the area they are speeding the most, leave them in there.
Yeah, right. So the way Belvedere and Peninsula, I'm most of you all familiar, they they kind of weave back and forth. And and really the the worst stretches are those stretches right in the middle of those weaves, the three stretches down through there. And then and really in particular, probably more of the, you know, the on the on the north end of the project, the peninsula stretch. Or I'm sorry, it's the Belvedere stretch because the peninsula stretch we with the, we actually have speed or speed uh humps um on that section. So that stretch, uh, the next stretch would be uh the peninsula stretch that's in the middle. And then finally, the the last stretch would be that peninsula stretch that's on the south end. So the Belvedere stretch, the peninsula stretch.
My suggestion would be to leave leave them where the where the speeding is happening most often and then look at that. Maybe later on, you may go ahead and remove those too.
But if if we do move forward with some sort of a an installation, we would want it to be more permanent than it is. Uh, it's, this is a real nightmare for Richard De Priest's office uh with.
Because they're just, they're just, they're just.
They're bolted into the asphalt and so every time they're hit, it's it's working on that asphalt, creating holes in that asphalt.
I agree with that.
So i- it's, yeah, we would much rather put in something that's more permanent. It would be an asphalt, probably an asphalt hump like we have on Peninsula if we were to go in that direction.
Miss Love.
Well, he, you just answered part of what I was going to say. I was going to, you said it was a hassle for that department. And I was going to ask, is it a hassle to remove it or to work on it? And you just answered that. But other thing I was going to say is I drove down, I drove through there this past week and was thinking, oh, my gosh, this stuff, this has got to really work. Because it's your, not that I was speeding, but it sure does slow you down.
You've got to get down to probably around five miles an hour it to comfortably go over those speed bumps.
So on that eighty, so on that uh percentage of people speeding, is it, is it only, are they, I mean, that seemed like a short, a small amount of people speeding. Is that because we've got these speed hump things now, you think?
So we still did have some speeding in some of the areas, even with the speed bumps in place. Uh, and it's because if if you do go in, if you really want to cut the speeding down to say twenty five, you know, you want everybody to drive twenty five miles an hour. You really have to place bumps or humps, you know, every every s- you know, few hundred feet or so, uh, so that. Folks are not, you know, revving up to to make up for lost time as they've gone over that speed bump. And so we would have to, and I'm not suggesting that we do that because I don't think it's, again, I don't think it's that big of an issue. So I wouldn't suggest doing that. The the thing that the speed bumps or speed humps do is for the the two chiefs that I was just talking about. They really slow down our our response times. Um, and and it's. I personally, I I wouldn't want speed bumps in my neighborhood because I think it's aggravating. Um, so I and it's not for everyone. Um, and and I know it does, it does affect our response times. And so I am nine times, maybe ninety nine times out of a hundred up here telling you, you know, no on speed bumps or speed humps. Because I think there are other techniques and things like that to to cut a few miles an hour off if that's really what we need to achieve.
But we tried some of those other techniques here and they didn't work.
But we, so to do it right, we really need to spend more money. That was our, that was our mistake. And uh, you know, I'll I'll pay for that apparently, but uh, but you know, my next suggestion. Well, uh, I I am paying for it right now. I'm still standing up here talking about speed bumps. Uh, so.
Well, let's put it off. If anybody got any problem, let's put it off a couple of weeks. Let's put it off a couple of weeks, Nick, and then I'll get with you before then. We'll put it back on if you want to.
If we're talking about things that don't work, I'm still saying that that little triangle over there off a long haul is not working.
Sure. You're talking about on the Harris thing?
Yes.
The pork chop.
The pork chop. We've heard before.
Yeah, I seen a truck that got off routed in there. I think it was last week. He kind of got stuck because it couldn't make it, you know, without tearing stuff up. I think it needs to come out.
Yeah, I don't think he might like stuff.
I'm okay with taking it out. Uh, again, that was, that was a uh really a concession to folks that were concerned about the danger of making that left hand turn. It is limited. Uh, and so the the goal was to try to limit.
I know.
Oh, the the danger. Uh, so I.
Need to do that or you put a turnaround there, so.
Right, and that gets back into the response time, emergency response and, you know, cutting that out for station four uh back around, which would be, as we talked to the chief. At that point in time, you know, those folks that are that are responding to all that in that long haul of farms subdivision would be, they would be responding from station four. And that's adding a minute to their response time.
Let's talk about number three, Ms. Tuttle, resolution.
Be happy to. Uh, so this is a a resolution to approve transferring some funds around within the twenty sixteen G O bond fund. Uh, we've completed, I believe, about five projects in there and with this airport road improvement project, the one that we widened uh from two lanes to three lanes between Gregory Drive and Hartsel Pike. Uh, we were under on four of them, but we were over on this fifth one. And so we're asking to move some funds around within that twenty sixteen G O bond fund. Uh, to to account for the overage that we had on this project.
Motion to move on.
Motion has been made probably second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Tuttle. Richard De Priest, item number four. He's going to give us all this money back, right?
Item number four is a ordinance appropriated funds from the sale of recyclables to go back into the public works line.
Motion has been made properly second. Any further discussion?
Recycling of the green man.
Third.
Never mind.
Did you recycle in the green man, he said?
I'm still holding on to them for you.
He's still.
I have one of those for you.
No, I, uh, thank you. Trying to cut back on green meat.
I I I took it to the state of the city address and you weren't there and I was going to give it to you at the next meeting. I think it's sitting on my carport.
All in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Pass unanimously. Thank you, Richard. Connie Kietrel, item number five.
Yes, this is um in ordinance to change one of our requirements in our beer code, alcohol and beer code. It's a restriction on the distance from a church and a school. And um, there is a lot of. Controversy, I would say, because there's a lot of conflict between uh churches now that are popping up kind of. And we don't know that they're a church. They may be in a school. They may be uh and sometime with COVID, they are not open. They are by zoom. So that has caused some issues. So we are asking that um those restrictions be taken out. They are currently two hundred and fifty feet from building to building. And um. They want to add something that I'm saying, but this is, this has kind of been an issue.
One thing that I would add is we already have a lot of places that have a beer permit that violate these restrictions because they were grandfathered in. And so if we were ever challenged in court um on the constitutionality of this, I think we might have a hard time saying it's for the health, safety and welfare of our citizens. Also talked with our police chief. He said that in those that are grandfathered in, we've not had any, any issues. Um, and so we're just, I know a lot of other municipalities have taken those out of their code. We're just trying to update our code.
Why are we bringing this up now?
Because we've had some issues with some that are um that are in violation. And we feel like this is the just and equitable.
So when you say they're grandfathered in, that is because uh somebody built a building next to, I mean, built a church next to an existing beer market, correct? That's how they'd be grandfathered in.
They could be, or they could have been there before this ordinance came into effect. And it is difficult now for our beer board and Ms. Kietrel to know when someone submits an application, especially what during COVID. But we have people, we have places that are popping up as churches. Sometimes they are churches and sometimes they're not churches. What and what is defined? How do you define a church? Does it have to be a church full time? And there's a lot of issues. And so it just takes that out.
You've got churches using um meeting spaces, churches in strip malls. Um, so there's that element of it. I mean, churches aren't just buildings with steeples on them anymore. Then the other thing that's kind of created is almost any competition environment. Because those that are either grandfathered in or um facility was built close to them after they were already established. They they don't have any competition around them because nobody else can come in and sell beer or whatever.
And we, we already don't have that restriction in our downtown district.
In the what?
In the downtown district.
In the downtown district. We took it off a few years ago.
How old is this beer permit, beer license?
Ordinance.
I think it was in the early nineties. Does that sound right, Connie?
Probably.
So I'm sure Nashville or Hendersonville, some of them other cities that are um starting to develop or have developed a lot, they probably have ordinance as such.
Some do and some don't, but in talking with, I know that Franklin is taking theirs out, Smyrna's taking theirs out, talking with Brentwood and some of the other um places that we we go to conferences. Most people are starting to remove those because of these very issues.
I think we've outgrown that old law.
Motion to send it on second.
There has been a motion properly made second. Any other discussion?
Are we just le, are we just taking out the number of feet? Basically, yes.
We're taking out the number of feet. We did, we did put some language. If you look at the, at the ordinance, we put some language in that still gets some discretion for traffic congestion. But other than that, we're we're deleting the distance requirements.
Is there any other thing that that uh we're restricted, any kind of business going next to a church in our ordinance besides the beer?
Uh, there's something in the liquor, but there's not a an actual distance. It just says too close in proximity. And I know that Ms. Kietrel is going to be working on updating. And I know that Ms. Ketchrel is going to be working on updating all of that alcohol, um, ordinances. Other than that, I'm not aware of any, any other ordinance that has a limitation.
Any, any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Anybody opposed? Passion unanimously. Thank you. Item number six, Mr. James Fenton.
Thank you, uh, James Fenton, Economic Development. Uh, just asking that we reappoint, uh, Ryan Kleinerd and Derek Jackson to the Health Education Housing Facilities Board to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made properly second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passion unanimously. That concludes our agenda. We got.
And Mr. Tuttle.
Yeah, Ms. Tuttle, I'm sorry. Under other business, Ms. Tuttle has a resolution.
Mayor and council, I placed a, a resolution, draft resolution on your desk. Uh, this evening, we talked about this two weeks ago and, um, we were able to, uh, get this item. It's a, a resolution for um, renaming or naming a street that had been called Elm Street or Anderson Avenue uh, to a name that I'll let you read if you'd like to. Um, and this is passed, this was passed unanimously about a planning commission last night. Uh, keeping it up, putting it on the agenda tonight and then having it, um, passed next week will get.
Is there a motion to send it on? A motion has been made properly second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Passion unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Tuttle. Any other business?
I got one.
Mr. Alexander.
I just want to make sure that we don't forget that, uh, there was a lady by the name of Ms., uh, E- Yvonne Malone, who started this, uh, while it was King Day here in Somme County. She was a council lady back years ago. So we still want to remember and thank, uh, Ms. Yvonne Malone for bringing that to the city attention for that day to be.
She was on the council then, wasn't she, Ms. Tuttle? Any department heads? Any other business besides that? Any department heads come forward. Mr. McCord.
Real quick, Bill McCord, City Planner. Uh, last night, the planning commission, uh, approved a conceptual site plan for Matt Caldwell Park. It involves a lot of improvements on core of engineer property around, not just the park that you know, but a lot of that basin down there. So, uh, there's no process for approval of a site plan before council. But if you're interested in seeing that, I can give them a presentation in two weeks or there are next council committee meeting on what that plan is. So, uh, and then we get more detailed plans. We'll use that plan as the basis for applying for grants for improvements in that.
I'd like to see it.
I'd like to see it, Mr. McCord.
I'd actually like to see you do it at a council meeting because those meetings tend to get more attention. And I really think the public will be interested in seeing it. If this council's supportive of that. I know it's not an actual item, but I just think it's something people would really appreciate seeing.
And it'd certainly be an attachment to an appropriations, uh, action that y'all take as well. So, uh, just wanted to let you know about that and, uh, because we've been working on that for some time. Also, uh, they discussed the comp plan. They do have the comp plan in their, uh, seat or in their hands. And they have just a few minor little changes to discuss and we expect that to come to the council probably in March.
That's great.
Yeah, there was, there, I, I, I want to chime in on that too, if I may. There's quite a bit of discussion about what happens if they approve it and then the council wants to do something district, uh, different. So my suggestion is going to be, if it comes to this council and you want to do something different than what the planning commission approved, then I hope you will send it back to the planning commission and ask them to consider amending it. Because we don't need two different plans and we don't need the council not to adopt it. So I think there's a way that we can navigate that because I do anticipate some concerns from this body and they're potentially in conflict with the planning commission. But I think if we have some give and take and some creative solutions, we can still have a really good document that we all feel good about.
Or maybe a joint workshop or something.
That's fine too.
Okay. And then also, uh, uh,
last time we met, I think in the council committee or back in January, as I reported that the, uh, you know, had requested that the Station Camp Creek PMDP and rezoning out on next to Carrollton, go back to the planning commission. Well, it did last night. And I just was going to report to you that, that they did have a plan that was acceptable to the planning commission and that recommendation will come to you to the next council committee meeting. And also two other things that we're working on is an annexation of the Big Station Camp Boulevard right away, the one they just repaid. Uh, that's out now in our urban growth boundary, not in the city of Hendersonville. So we'll be bringing that as an administrative action, uh, initiated by the city to annex that section of road and then also a de-annexation of a part of the Avondale community. That section that's isolated from the rest of the city. It's on the north side of the CSX railroad. Also on the northern, mostly on the northwest side of three eighty-six. So get to it is, uh, almost a, almost two mile track into the city of Hendersonville and then double backing to, to get to those properties and they're quite isolated. So we're, uh, going to entertain a, or have you entertain a, uh, ordinance to de-annex that area. It was excluded from the urban growth boundary. So that part of it's taken care of. Follow up to the action that y'all have taken to change that urban growth boundary, to not include that whole section there. And that's all.
Thank you, Mr. McCord. Any other department heads? No department heads, seeing none. Is there a motion? Motion has been made probably second. All in favor, say aye. We adjourn. Y'all have a good day.